All right, good evening. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Welcome to the June 9th regular City Commission meeting, starting at 6 o'clock. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason that is just so.
All right, we are gonna move on to approval of the agenda. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. All right, Abby, call the roll.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ulri?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
All right, item number three is public comment. Keep in mind, this is for items that are on the consent agenda or not on the agenda. So if you are here for the public parking program, that is going to have its own public comment section. But if you are willing to make a public comment, please come up to the podium, state your name, address, and keep your comments to three minutes. Okay, hearing.
I'm not sure when this should be brought. It's about the sand down Silver Beach.
Oh, please, yeah, go ahead. Yep, absolutely.
Well, as you all know, I'm Cindy. 66, 446, 384, and 382 Upton, and past business owner of Neon Grill. So, anyway, definitely of the city. Now, I walk all the time, and I walk down by Silver, and I just happened to be walking, I think it was Friday or Saturday. And you know, part of that side, they've covered, or you've, I don't know who's covered it, but they've covered up the sand on the one sidewalk. So, I thought, okay, it's not even the heat of the summer yet. Now, my little friend that has macular, so I'm holding her, we're both little. She weighs 90 pounds, I weigh 120. We're walking there, arm in arm, and here comes a guy with a dog. Okay, he says, oh, I'm sorry, I know, I know, there's no room. So he's very polite about it, but she's having to step in the sand to get by. So I'm just painting the picture for you. So we could go a little further. Now, here's just a woman with a stroller. And she's trying to walk along there, and we're trying to get single file, but I kinda need to help my friend in there, so she doesn't trip. And so, anyway, it, I don't know why or what that's supposed to accomplish, but I don't think it's gonna be good. That sidewalk is really narrow in that part. The other part gets wider. But, yeah, it's, it's not good.
You're talking about right at the entrance of Silver Beach as you're walking on? Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then, and then, of course, the rest of it is piled up like there's no maintenance going on. It's just big piles of sand, not just the pile that you covered, but even on the proper side, that's trying to be open, it's a mess. You know, so anyways, I bring that up, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, Bern Schwartz, 508 Lyons Park. Two times in the last month, I almost hit somebody on a bike or on a, not a moped, but a motorized.
Scooter?
Skateboard.
Yeah.
It was at night. They were both dressed in black. The reason I did not hit them is because there was other reasons I didn't want to turn. For example, I was on Lake Boulevard getting ready to turn down Park. There were some people at the corner of Park and Lake Boulevard, and I waited to see what they were gonna do. It's at night, and they wanted to see if they're gonna cross, in which case I'd, you know, give them the chance to cross. In the meantime, some guy going 100 miles an hour on a motorized skateboard went right past me. I never saw him. If I had turned, I would have hit him. I would have ruined his life and my life. What I wonder and don't know, is there an ordinance that they have to have lights on their skateboards or their bicycles? And if they don't, you need to pass that, because even the bicyclist, black as could be, couldn't see him, another reason I didn't turn. And I'm like, oh my God, I could have killed him, I could have ruined my life. I don't know what the ordinance is, but you gotta give some thought to that, because that is wrong and scary. Thanks.
Thank you, yeah, thank you. Another one in the back?
Hello, friends and neighbors. Kim Jorgensen-Gane, I live at the corner of Elmen Main. I wanted to share some history that is relevant to our recent conflations and conversations, having to do with the purchase of Silver Beach by the county. In November of 1977, LeCo Corporation purchased the Silver Beach property. Marion County purchased that property in December of 1990 from LeCo Corporation through $1 million donation from LeCo plus a $3 million grant from the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund. I remember this because I was working for my dad, Pete Jorgensen, at the time, as his office manager and closing agent. And he was key in the market analysis on the Silver Beach property to establish the value that was settled on between LeCo Corporation and the county. In addition, the county then put in, I'm looking for my number here, not just the county, but through grants as well, put in $6.3 million total for the purchase and the development of the Silver Beach County Park from various sources. I couldn't find anything through a Google search that talks about, over all these decades, any revenue sharing between Marion County and the city of St. Joseph. So the city of St. Joseph has had to bear the burden for all these decades of maintaining and updating all of the critical infrastructure, including access to the county park over all these years. I don't know if that's correct, but I couldn't find anything about that. In 2023, overall tourism spending in Marion County totaled $480 million, an 8.6% increase from the prior year. While Silver Beach significantly drives tourism, this figure includes all tourism-related spending in the county, not just park entrance fees. And there doesn't seem to be a place to find that dollar amount, actually, not publicly anyways. So I found that interesting. What I would really, you know, we all heard about a fight breaking out last week on a Tuesday, and the county. Thank you. Saying two officers, which is not a huge contribution. I think this is a really amazing opportunity for a private partnership that we need to explore. Thank you so much.
All right, other public comment? All right, seeing none, we will move along. We are on announcements, we've got proclamation. Do we have James Gunter here? All right, come on up. All right, I will give a brief introduction. If you wanna talk a little bit about your proclamation, this is James Gunter, co-founder and executive director of the Present Pillars Foundation. He asked that the commission support his proclamation for making June Men's Health Month. He'd like to say a few words on why men's health is so important to our community.
Sure, so, good evening, everyone. As Mayor Thomas said, my name is James Gunter, executive director and co-founder at Present Pillars. And men's health is important because, well, let me back up. When myself and John Sam's co-founded Present Pillars, it was because we were discussing the good, bad, and ugly of our own fatherhood journeys. And over time, we've discovered that one of the larger barriers for dads that fail to show up the way they or others want them to is men's health. So, men's health is the underlying cause of the fatherhood crisis that we're seeing in America. And the healthier men are, mentally, physically, financially, the better off we are for our families. So, for that reason alone, I think it's really important that we elevate men's health and that we prioritize it. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I do wanna highlight one of the things in this proclamation here. You kind of, you kind of really call out the mortality gap, the 19-year mortality gap between St. Joseph and Benton Harbor white and black men. And I think that's a really important statistic. I don't know if you wanna share anything more on that?
Sure, so that's a, it was, I wanna say, 2019 Corewell Health Needs Assessment that determined that. And in addition to that, if you don't mind, we actually got really great news today. So, on the House floor, Dad Week is also a part of this proclamation. So, the Dad Week resolution will be read on the House floor on Wednesday. So, it'll, it'll be all over Michigan, and it came right here from southwest Michigan.
Very good. Congratulations. Well. And James, I've got the, I've got the proclamation for you right here. It's signed by all of us, so I can give this to you right now. Can we, what's the pleasure of the commission on adopting this proclamation? That we've already signed?
I move to adopt the following proclamation, declaring June 2025 to be Men's Health Month and the week preceding Father's Day as Dad Week in the city of St. Joseph.
Support.
Any public comment on Men's Health Week? Abby, call the roll.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ulri?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
All right, thank you, James. All right, moving on to item number five, this is our downtown parking program update. Emily, you wanna give that for us?
I would be happy to, thank you. On Wednesday afternoon, I received an email from a community member who identified that the pay stations in the city parking lots are not ADA compliant. On Friday morning, our assistant city manager and city engineer, our public works director, and our downtown development director, and I walked through the downtown to evaluate the pay stations. And we immediately confirmed that the concerns shared over email were accurate. While the pay stations themselves are ADA compliant, the pay stations in our lots were installed on medians, making them non-compliant. Following a number of conversations with staff and the parking subgroup, we have decided to temporarily pause the downtown parking program in order to address this issue. I so rarely get a pause when it comes to parking. The city of St. Joseph should always be a community for everyone. Anything less is not acceptable to me, and I know it isn't acceptable to our commissioners, which is why we've decided to pause the program while we make things right. While we hit pause to correct this issue, it also gives us an opportunity to continue our discussions with our stakeholders, business owners, residents, downtown residents, and others, some of whom continue to have very real concerns about the program. This program is about supporting the downtown and the downtown businesses and creating more turnover to increase access to the downtown. The goal is to get it right for as many users and stakeholders as we can, and I know that we have work to do. I look forward to continuing to make improvements on all fronts, working with a broad range of partners. While the paid aspect of the parking program will be paused effective immediately, the time restrictions will remain in place. I don't have a timeframe for this pause just yet, but I can share that we hope to have this issue addressed quickly, and we will provide updates as we learn more. Thank you to all who are sharing very meaningful feedback, questions, support, and concerns. I'm disappointed that we have to hit pause. I'm sorry that we aren't ADA compliant, and I am grateful that we have this opportunity to restart and continue to work together. Thank you so much for your patience as we improve.
Thank you for that update. Any questions or comments from the commission? This is nothing to vote on, just any comments in general? I do wanna echo your sentiment on that it's very important to our city to be accessible for all people. We are a city that wants to be inclusive, as evidenced by two playgrounds that are going up in our city that want to be ADA compliant and accessible to all. So, I just wanna echo those sentiments as well. I guess we can start public comments. So whoever wants to come up again, state your name at the podium, address, and you will have three minutes.
I have a question before I start my three minutes, please. What, what did you mean about the time restrictions stay in place?
The three-hour and the all-day. It'll just be the, the three-hour parking will still be three-hour parking. The all-day parking will still be all-day parking.
So the kiosks still have to be used?
Nope, nope.
No, just the time.
So that people still may get a ticket, you'll just go back to the old way of doing it?
Yeah, if you stay beyond three hours in a three-hour parking space, you might still be ticketed. But there would be no payment required.
Okay. And questions do count towards your three minutes.
That's okay, you can speak first.
My name is Becky Kles. I've spoken before and emailed in some concerns. My primary concern is for the older generation, as you know. Cash is not accepted at the machines. The machines are complicated. The location of the kiosks for the handicap, like my parents, they just don't come back. And I have many examples of that, but I have some new issues today that I'd like to share observations. I owned a cleaning business in downtown St. Joe for over 15 years, and it grew to 180 employees because we did three things, verbatim. We spent a lot of time on employee training. We had strategic planning meetings with our customers and all the stakeholders, which is what I know you just mentioned. And we did walkthroughs. We checked our checkers, we inspected our own work, we asked questions. So that's the three things I think are really missing so far from the system. And I'm super glad to hear, by the way, that you're pausing this to do that. That's exciting. So hopefully, the feedback I have maybe contribute to the momentum forward. I did a walkthrough on Sunday for a couple hours of my own downtown St. Joe. I spoke to over a dozen people who parked, didn't know them, they didn't know me, and 90% were frustrated. So, the system is definitely not working, as is. But I wanted to share, people are still parking and going to the beach. I have many quotes from people that they gave me, I don't have time to share them, but I'm happy to share them later. It's much easier to still park up and go down, it's less expensive. I watched older couple struggling for seven minutes trying to figure out the kiosk. So I know it's confusing. I talked to them afterwards. They're from Chicago, they use parking systems all the time. They said this one's confusing. There was conflicting signs about weekend enforcement. One couple was confused, and they said, I'm just gonna take a pitch. Residents were confused after speaking with the police on the parking passes. Visitors were skipping payment because they didn't see the signs or didn't understand them. Many thought Sundays were free. I heard that like three times. Younger visitors were frustrated because they couldn't extend the parking time easily. The host at the Buck said three different people, how can that be three minutes already? Thank you. But anyway, I have much more to share. I'm happy to share. I'm happy to volunteer, and I encourage you all to become a parking ambassador for a couple hours. You'll learn a lot.
I do wanna thank you for doing that, because we all walk around and we, when we see people that need help, we help them. So it's great that people in our community are doing the same thing, walking around and helping people that maybe start a station. That's just being friendly. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Beth Fanning, 2424 Shoreham Highlands in St. Joe, and I'm the lady who wrote the letter. My husband and I were, came down to visit the Antiques on the Bluff, and he was able to park in a handicap spot by Curious Kids Museum. And he was able to get up because there was a curb cut to make the payment. However, he couldn't turn around. He finally did, with my help, he jockeyed himself back around and back down. Okay, we won't park in that lot anymore. But after taking a look around town, we did find out that every parking lot had the same issue regarding noncompliance, of being able to reach it. And luckily, I was along as an able-bodied person to help him out. And when you ask certain people, oh, well, they're handicap people. It'd be so much easier if they just used the app. It's putting a burden on a whole class of society. That's just not fair to them. Now, I did send a letter to Ms. Hackworth, and she kindly responded to me. And I have a solution is just to make them, those parking spots, all free. I know you're working on forever. But you're going through an awful lot of time and money and effort in order to recoup the, the revenue from only 18 spots. I don't know how many parking spots totally you have in the lots in downtown, but that's a lot. You're gonna be moving kiosks and shoving things around just for 18 spots. I was just curious, has there ever been a formal study done as to determine how many beachgoers actually parked uptown for the day? Was it enough to cause a shopping crisis, or was it just a few people being in considerate? And the solution that you have for paid parking is not fixing the perceived problem. You're trying to rotate people through downtown, and what it's doing is just stopping people from coming downtown. My, my husband has a friend in coffee. I'm sorry, Roger's a little spicy, I'll tone it down. But they were talking and, about coming downtown, and Roger said, "I never put a credit card in that machine, and I don't have the smarts to use no app." And that is echoed by a lot of people that we know, maybe older, maybe younger, I don't know. I just talked to a friend at Myers this afternoon, becoming, coming here, and we talked briefly, and he's, pardon me, quote, "That parking down there just really sucks." Well, he's a genuine person, having a genuine reaction to what is going on down here. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Rick Hill. I'm the owner of Killwens 217 State Street, downtown St. Joseph. I'm here to speak on behalf of a group of business owners today who are with us. Kelly Ann, or Kelly Wilson, Perennial Accents, Jim Kramer of Shoes Restaurant, Jim Champion, Rybel's Restaurant, Matt Bonafont, GNM Variety, and Ken Kaminsky of The Buck Restaurant. So, I'm here also speaking on behalf of a large group of key businesses who have made up a core of our downtown district. Collectively, our businesses have been operating in St. Joe for several decades. The six of us are going to ask you, Mayor Thomas, if you could pause the timer for me, please, and let me speak on all of our behalves.
It's three minutes, you can each take your own time if you want, that's fine.
We're gonna, we're gonna ask Commissioner Fernandez, Commissioner Ulri, Commissioner Sorolla, Commissioner Binkley, Mayor Thomas, and city manager Emily Hackworth to open your hearts and engage common sense to actually listen to us business owners and the business community that we represent. We are a large part of the foundation of the downtown St. Joseph and are representing the livelihood of the downtown businesses and this entire community. We're shocked by the outcry of the community and the complete failure of this parking policy. There has not been a more disastrous decision of such significance in this city in decades. The downtown and the community are now on a downward spiral. Your lack of action and response continues to elevate those concerns. I do want to mention that we need to take the downtown temperature down in this town. People are being threatened, people are boycotting other downtown businesses, and that is absolutely unacceptable. A parking committee spent time, resources, and energy on designing and implementing this program and installing the equipment and signage. We know your intent was to help, but unfortunately, for your efforts, the implementation was a failure. Many of us have attended meetings when possible, discussing this program. When we were aware of those meetings, but as key stakeholders, we were not engaged by you and your team to play an active role in it, nor did we feel you listened to us. We are now fully engaged. We all have had many questions, engaged in meetings and discussions, and most of our concerns continue to be tabled. Have received no responses, or we've been told, let's wait and see what happens. We submitted a letter on June 2nd detailing the concerns we had and asking for you to meet with us. In a letter, thank you.
Thank you.
I think it makes, rather than have them all, if he wants to continue reading, I mean, he's representing a group. It's semantics, yeah. It's just semantics.
So then, what do you, do you want me to do one, two, three, four, five, six times three? Just do what, we got a room full of people, we have a lot of people who wanna speak.
I think, I think they'll be done in 18 minutes.
I'll have it done in less than 18 minutes.
Okay.
I promise you.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mayor Thomas. Thank you, Commissioner Sorolla. In a letter that we had specifically asked whether the city had complied with the American Disabilities Act, the ADA. When you implemented this system, you ignored this in your parking meeting agenda on the June 5th. Why do you think you are above abiding by those requirements? Because you're not. The city is not. Based on the community and the patrons' concerns, we have taken it upon ourselves to research the ADA compliance of your equipment and the system you installed. It does not meet ADA compliance. What happens when a handicap person goes to Shoes to get their bowl of potato soup and trips and breaks a hip trying to go up and down the curbs? Juggle broken concrete, dodge trees, shrubs, to find an uncompliant kiosk? This is only one example where you dropped the ball. As the kiosks are located throughout the entire city, are noncompliant to ADA rules and regulations federally. In society, this is called discrimination. You have an entire ordinance department and a city engineer who hyperenforces ADA compliance on us, the business owners, including petty things like ripping out brand-new toilets just because the flusher handle is on the wrong side, tearing out doorways that our openings were, were not the right size, but then you wanted to move just mere inches. It's bad that you do not follow the law, it's deliberate that you ignored it, and where are these people in your process, and how did this get approved? Our questions don't stop there. One, did the city take into consideration the safety of our citizens, employees, visitors, who are now forced to cross five lanes on my main street before implementing the plan? Two, is there a plan in place to keep the parking ambassadors employed forever, and at what cost? Because the equipment installed is difficult to use, confusing, and overall inconvenient. Number three, why did the city not follow the master plan, and the taxpayers paid you to implement and execute a test pilot program? Testing out the strategy so the adjustments could be made easily before the purchasing and installing of all the equipment across the city? Number four, what is the point of having a master plan if the commission and the signed committees are not going to follow it? What was there, was there any collaborative collaboration with the county parks other than other successful communities on discussing their systems that accept cash and more user-friendly? Six, why did the city distribute a parking pamphlet and poster that did not identify the location of handicapped parking spaces, or even where the 30-minute spots are? Seven, now, how much taxpayer dollars and city resources will be wasted to bring this equipment up to ADA compliance? That should have been installed correctly from the outset. Is this wasted money coming out of the repair budget of our downtown area? That is badly needed? Eight, have you considered our downtown employees and business owners who rely on their income to survive for their livelihoods of their families as we are cutting off, as we are cutting staff and laying off people due to this system already just to survive the impacts of this parking program? Have you even considered the long-term negative impact that will have on our entire community? And for what benefits? On June 5th, you disregarded our pleas to pause the program and instead made a few small concessions. Since these concessions were made, we have collectively seen either no improvement in revenues or even further declines, and the weather was beautiful. Collectively, we have seen revenue decline since implementation of 38% versus last year. and that represents well over $1 million in lost revenue in, as it continues to compound. During the weekdays, our city is a ghost town during the day, and that is not the weather that is causing this. The vibrancy of the downtown during the day, especially during the week, is being impacted drastically. Seniors who normally come downtown, especially during the day, to get their coffee or breakfast, shop at the local stores, get their hair done at the local salons, go to the local spas, or lunch, are now going somewhere else. For this time of the year, our businesses should be busy during the week, and they are empty. The existing policy you have put into place without even a trial or test period has created more problems than was intended to solve. You told the community it wasn't for the revenue, but to improve turnover and traffic flow, to help our downtown businesses, and to help the beach parking out. Your system has not done this. Beachgoers are still parking in the lots, and the businesses have lost significant revenues and income. This policy has created a long list of problems, far more than it's even remotely solving, including chasing away our local customers and visitors. Many will not be back because they have found other options, more friendly nearby communities, and some places and other pla, new places spend their money. Those options don't come with seasonal stressful experience and all the inconvenience required in our community. Additional problems with this policy. It's putting our businesses in jeopardy of becoming very seasonal, only during the summer months or worse, closing permanently. Employees are leaving because of having to park a farther distance and not making enough revenue at their employment to survive. A town image that now portrays to our guests that you are constantly being watched by the police, and if you screw up using an un-user-friendly meter, you're going to be given a ticket. Police are actively seen everywhere writing tickets, and you have frankly ticked off or pissed off many of our visitors by the complexity and fear. The peace, the police are now being seen as we versus them. And that is never a good thing in this community or for the public's safety in any community. Visitors are being scorned and left with a bad taste in their mouths for returning to visit St. Joe by the inconvenience of the kiosks, the signage that is confusing, the time it takes to figure them out, the scavenger hunt of trying to find hidden meters behind parked cars, the stress of watching their watch all the time, and the fear of getting a ticket if they run minutes over trying to enjoy downtown and supporting local businesses. It is also an inconvenience for every single one of us and every single visitor, period. It is also creating legal issues for the city of St. Joe. It is endangering our handicapped visitors and our mobility-challenged visitors. It has alienated our seniors, who don't know how to use the meters, and who will not use an app because they won't be back. You're taking up everybody's precious time and energy, hurting our community, and sucking the life out of our business district that should be thriving right now. It doesn't need to be this way. We need a strong summer business, summer business to survive, and you are taking that away from us business owners. We're focused, we are confused why you are disrespecting and fighting our constituents that you are supposed to be supporting. This is your job. We all pay you to do it. And we expect you to do it with the community's best interest in mind. At the June 5th meeting, you heard upwards of 150 minutes of continuous opposition. Speakers from all walks of life, you did not listen. We believe you just do not care. Are you waiting to see if we all just go away? Well, we're not going away. Have the five of you considered that the massive percentage against this policy for legitimate reasons might not be wrong? Can you honestly tell each of yourselves that you've done your jobs as representation to seek to understand your constituents? Are you listening and actively working to resolve this with urgency? Your lack of engagement with us from the get-go of rolling out this plan has been concerning. Many of you haven't even reached out to most of us business owners, who are the heart of St. Joe, to see for yourself the ramifications of your parking policy. We are just, we just keep hearing, "Wait and see. Just wait and see." Your lack of concern, action, and involvement sends the message loud and clear. You don't care. We don't understand why all of you are fighting a town that you're supposed to be supporting. All this time, we've all been trying to get you all to take notice of it. Is time we've lost trying to run our businesses and are floundering due to your policy changes? At the rate this is going, we believe our downtown businesses will not be able to operate during the fall and winter months because of the loss of revenue since day one of the program. And we have lost customers who will never come back because they have found other places to go. The implementation and design of the system was irresponsible and poorly managed. Your constituents do not support it and feel like none of you are listening to them, period. We're more than express, we've more than expressed how much damage this has caused. We're asking again for you to stop this program right now, make a motion to pause the program, which you have immediately, to cover the meters and signs, and start a task force which includes a fair representation of the downtown business representatives to provide input. We've already begun working on a plan that would provide for the city's revenues while still accomplishing many goals. Without all this crazy hassle and nonsense, we aren't supposed to be a, we aren't opposed to a variation in paid parking, but the positives need to far outweigh the any negatives, unlike the system is in place now. We all risk losing this community because of your decisions, not just the businesses, but all of us. As we have already requested, we are willing to work with you to develop a strategy, but we need you to reciprocate and be, be willing to work with us. This has not been the case to date. We are committed to do, we are committed to doing everything in our power to stop this. We are not going away. We want a motion tonight to pause the parking immediately and develop a strategy that works for everyone. Let me repeat, we would like the, the motion tonight to pause the parking immediately. And yes, we will fight City Hall to save this community and the livelihood of all the people who call St. Joseph their home. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. We, we're gonna call next public comment?
Sure.
Please.
Luann Schaefer. I actually work at Perennial Accents. I have two things. One is to thank you guys for putting the bicycle stands downtown, because I did notice those, so thank you for that. The second thing is, I wanted to give an example of a couple of parking situations. Because I work at Perennial Accents, I actually pop in a lot to do stuff at the store when I'm not working. And I was leaving the other day, and two lovely older ladies were trying to pay for parking. They, it was their first time. They wanted to explore going to Brooky's for breakfast, which was fantastic. And they had not been down, so they were trying to use the meters. And I noticed they were struggling, so I walked over to help. And they couldn't figure out, what, what they couldn't figure out is how to add more time, right? You have to really read all of those instructions. So I'm like, okay, just press one, just press one again to get to the time that you need. And then we got through that, and then they didn't figure, okay, now do I put my card in? So they put their card in, then they had to press okay, then it finally gave them their receipt. Okay, so I did it for the one lady, and then the next lady was with her. She was in a separate car, so I helped her. The other lady said, "Now, we can put an app on our phone?" "Yes." "Well, where's the, is there something that tells me where I need to go? I mean, it, I can read this, but how do I know I'm getting the right app?" The other lady said, "I'm not, if I have to put an app on my phone, I'm not doing it, and I'm not coming back. This is way too complicated for me." So that was their experience. Then I am, the next day, I was back downtown. I paid to park to go into Perennial Accents, and I was just picking a couple of things up. I had a few minutes, so I thought, oh, I'll run over to Cafe Tozy. As I was going, oh, by the way, when I got to the meters, the meter told me that it couldn't print me a receipt. Okay, it was malfunction or no paper or whatever, but it wouldn't print out a receipt. So I go through the process, took a picture of the screen at the end, so I would know how much time I had in case I had an issue. I was leaving that, and there was an older gentleman standing at the machine, also trying to figure it out, and one of your ambassadors was there talking to him. That ambassador told him, "Oh, well, if you pay here at the kiosk, you don't have, you don't get a service fee. If you download the app, you, you know, you'll have to pay a service fee." And I said, "Wait a minute. Whoa, 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 that's not right. I just paid to park. I put my card in, and I had a service fee." "Oh, no, 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 no." I'm like, "Yes?" And he's like, "Well, can I see your receipt?" And I said, "Well, the machine wouldn't print me out a receipt, but thankfully, I took a picture." So I showed him on my receipt. He had no idea that that service fee for somebody that put their card in. So people are not trained properly. So I took care of that, took care of that customer, gave them the information. So I'm just saying, you're gonna put a plan together, make sure you're out there talking to people and understanding what their struggles are.
Well, thank you for talking.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Scott Dinas. I'm an attorney from Grand Rapids with the Varnum Law Firm. I'm here for business owners tonight. I have three things I want to talk about very quickly. The first is, when I came last week to the meeting and spoke, I parked in front of The Buck. When I left the meeting and went to my car, of course, I had a parking ticket to greet me. That's not what I want to talk about. Since then now, yesterday, and then today, my wife first, and now I got a text message saying that my, I had an outstanding traffic ticket that needed to be dealt with. I don't think it was the city that sent it to me. I think it was a phishing text. But I just wonder if there's some kind of data breach that's going on, because the likelihood of that happening to both my wife and I right after that ticket is slim.
There is not.
So that's the first thing. The second thing is, I understand that there is a parking lot down by the splash pad that has now been designated for users of the splash pad only. I encourage you, if you're making changes with parking, please just.
We haven't made any changes to that lot.
Thank you. I feel like there's a little bit of whack-a-mole going on, moving parking people around the city. And I, just until we have an opportunity for further input, I'd encourage you to stop. Lastly, while I welcome the decision that was.
We haven't made any changes except to the downtown.
Will you please let me finish?
I just want to make sure.
You're not gonna let me walk on you, so I'd like to be able to finish.
I just want to make sure we have accurate facts out.
Thank you for that. While I appreciate the decision that was made today, it wasn't made publicly. There ought to be a public decision. There ought to be a motion and a second and a vote. You folks should be accountable.
We're all right here.
Yeah, well, she announced it, and I didn't hear a vote. You voted to add additional regulations last week. That requires a decision of the city commission, not a decision by the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Jessica Chabot, 403 State Street. And it seems as though my theme has been taken a lot. And I have a letter that I printed out and I sent to those that I could, and I printed out and took it around to several of the business owners as well. And it was my plea of, hey, can you please hear what our problem actually is? And it was interesting, but this is just a watered-down quick of the letter. Everyone says, "What are your bullet points?" There's just one. We need a waiver. Us condo people, we need a waiver for all the spots. It's frustrating that people think that they understand the problem, but they don't. They just think they do, so they won't listen and understand. I've been told, "Jessie, you get free parking, okay, in the lot." But now we're, we're sharing that lot with the entire town now after Wednesday's meeting. We have to put our cars somewhere every 24 hours. The lots are our only options for us not to play the game of whack-a-mole, moving and daisy-wheeling from hourly spot to spot, which is not only a ridiculous hassle, but now we have to pay premium rates to do so. Competition for those spots is, and the lots has become a major problem. It used to be that all the spots in the blush, bluff, which were many, were all day. Taking those spots to hourly pushes the all-day needs to a few lots. The closest lots to our condos are now the most popular, and those lots are overstressed. We're having to park four more blocks away from our door. Even if you pay to park in the street in order to quickly come and go, it's a messed-up quality-of-life issue to use a kiosk or an app anytime you go through your door. The most nightmarish time for anyone living in a downtown condo has historically been any festival. It was cutthroat enough to get a spot then, let alone now. Now, now we live that fresh hell every day. I'm literally in pain from walking. And the general consensus is with the town, "So what? Rent a parking spot?" Please let us know, the Great Lakes Condo Association, of any reasonable spots available. I rented two spots for a few years when I first moved here, but then gave them up because at the time of the festivals, it was impossible for us. People had no respect for the private spots, and we couldn't get them towed because I was a renter, not an owner of the lot. There should be a waiver, a golden ticket, if you will, for the downtown condominium owners off of State Street with only the city parking to rely on. Set exemption should carry with the deeds on our condos. I would have never purchased the condo if I thought that the city would renegotiate what was promised, expected the bad enough parking to worse. Living at the condo has become horribly miserable. When I put out this letter, I had someone come and say to me, "Jessie, we've heard you. We just don't agree with you." I don't see how you can say you don't agree with me being miserable, and I wish you guys would care.
Other public comment?
Hi. I don't know if I have the right to speak here. I'm from St. Joseph Township. I was born and raised in St. Joe, and I'm looking at a shell of a town. I have a store down in New Buffalo, and they're talking about doing the exact same thing that you've done here, and I'm terrified. I feel for you people in unbelievable way. The loss of business. I built my business over 30 years, and I'm sure they did the same thing. And you need this business in the middle of summer. You can't just say, okay, our people, the people of New Buffalo are saying, "Well, it's the Chicago people who are gonna pay for this." It's a money grab. That's what it is. It's a money grab for the city. So the people of Chicago, they may or may not care, but the people of Three Oaks, the people of New Buffalo Township, the people of Coloma, the people all around here, care. And I live in St. Joe Township, and I think, do I want to come down like I used to and walk? You know, I'd park downtown, walk, go have my cup of coffee, walk around town, and then leave. Do I want to do that and go look, figure out something? No, I don't. I really don't. So you're gonna have that a thousandfold, and it's sad to see what this city has become. I don't know. Do you people walk downtown during the day? Have you seen the downtown? You know, I have a business, and it's like, I'm afraid that they do this to me. And New Buffalo, it's gonna be the exact same thing, and I'm sure it will, because people don't want to have to figure out how to move, use a kiosk, even if it's a dollar or whatever. People aren't gonna want to do it. They'll just go somewhere else. So you won't have a problem with people parking to go to the beach because they aren't even gonna come here anymore. And these people are gonna go out of business, and then maybe the meters will be gone, and then people can buy up their properties relatively cheap. Or they can have a condo, and they're gonna leave. Now, how much do you think their property values are gonna be worth? People are pissed, and it's time that somebody listens to them, because it's time to pause this, because it's gonna cost the city much more money than what they put in this paid parking than. I can imagine. He said, what, it's upwards of $1 million in lost revenues? Yes, more than a million. I look at it, if I lost 1% of my business, if I lost 10%, if I lost 20%, 30%, what, up to 60%? You've gotta be kidding me. So I think the city needs to take more than a pause over ADA and take a look at what they're actually doing to the city, because the city is falling apart. And you aren't gonna get these people back unless the city is then gonna come up with a program. these people back unless the city is then going to come up with a program where they're going to advertise free parking to get people back. So I'm sorry, but I had to have my say because I'm really worried about my business in New Buffalo as well as I feel bad for these people. And I live in St. Joe and it's, it's not right. It's not right at all.
Thank you. I don't think we got your name. Your name?
My name is Kathleen Cox. I live at 1330 Pine Hill Court, St. Joseph Township.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing. Have you guys gotten a lawyer?
The other thing is I think the.
Give time is up.
Cities open themselves up to a lawsuit.
Everybody.
Hello, I'm Anne Barnes at 608 Market Street. I have been out of town for several months, just got back this weekend, but I was appraised in what was going on, but I still was shocked. I'm just on Market Street. We're at the edge of the historic district. We can look downtown and I haven't seen it look that desolate since COVID. This is serious. I've listened to people in the short time I've been home about how much they've lost to their businesses. I've talked to my neighbors, you know, what, what's been going on there with the, the traffic? Employees, employees that work down here, business owners parking on State Street, it's just packed and then watching them walk. But it looked like COVID. So please reconsider this. Please just put this on permanent hold and save our town because it's dying. You're going to have to do a campaign. I was in advertising, I don't know if anybody remembers Perry Ballard Advertising, was an art director there. But you're going to have to have a campaign to get people to come back because a lot of people aren't going to come back. And then they're going to tell people what's going on and they're going to tell people. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Hi, I'm Dan Leung with 610 Broad Street with Lick Sweet Trees and Eats. I just wanted to mention some observations since the beginning of the pay parking program. I have noteworthy comments on people that said they didn't know how to use the machine and they couldn't pay for just 15 minutes, but at least with my experience, at least with the machine across the street from me on Broad Street, I found that it did work with 15 minutes, but you can also do 16, 17, 18, anything in between, you know, and I tested it up to an hour now and now yesterday when, when I went to look at it, now it's, now you can't do anything in between. Now you can't pay for 16 minutes, 20 minutes, it's only 15, 30, 45, 60. Isn't it better the other way where you could pay for the actual minutes that you need? You know, now you're charging more. If I, if I only need 20 minutes, why should I pay for 30 or have five minutes less? Anyway, that's just one observation and I've been at my storefront, which is slow. I mean, I'm outside a lot, you know, when there's nobody coming into the store and I, again, I see your ambassadors. Why are they always walking in pairs? Why don't they cover more ground if you're paying them $18 an hour? You know, why isn't one person going one direction, one person going the other direction? And also your police reserves, why do they have to drive in pairs? Do you need two people to drive the car to give out tickets? I mean, and they also, and I also noticed them, why are you parking in the 30 minute parking, uh, free parking? Why can't you park in the parking space because you're not going to give yourself a ticket? Now you're taking up a free parking spot. You know, so, and then here's another observation. Two days ago, I think it was on Saturday, I noticed this on top of the solar panel. If this is your piece, well, your parking bachelors used to do a better job taking care of your systems. Here's a cover too, I believe what looks like a printer. That's yours. If it's, if it's not your, if it's not your piece of equipment, great, but if it's yours, here it is. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Okay, I just have a little history to tell you too, just, just so you know, because you're all young and especially to me. And so anyway, many years ago, when I was young, Benton Harbor was a thriving town. It had four movie theaters, JCPenney's with elevators, Sears. Sears was the last to go. It was a huge Sears. Enders who had escalators, drinking fountains, bus stops. It had everything. St. Joe was nothing. No one wanted to come to St. Joe, even though the beach was here. Silver Beach seemed dirty to us because it had ale wives and oil spills all over. So anyway, except for the amusement park. Now, through the years, it's taken us years to get St. Joe as what you see today, a thriving place. No empty storefronts. We've got a couple. Used to be resale shops and just kind of downgrade stuff. We have a nice town. We can't afford to lose it. It takes years to get what we've, we've got to kill ones. We've got things that people come for, dress shops, all sorts of things. And then of course, above all, these, the, I know you guys agree that these kiosks are goofy. I've watched them for years at the beaches. They all study it and try to see in the sunlight. They can't tell what to do. I don't care if they're young or old, they line up. You don't want to have people lining up and then you don't want to, like they said, have ambassadors for life. You don't need help to have a normal meter. They make meters, if you must have them, that are very, they're just little meters in front of like we used to have, but they do take a credit card. So if you're going to stay 15 minutes, okay, you can put coin in. If you're going to stay long, then you use a credit card, but nobody needs to show you how. You won't have police giving tickets. That's a lot of money going out. It's a lot of waste of money. Ambassadors and extra police. The receipt paper, by the way, is always out. I'm walking around all over. That, there's, that's always out. These are reasons to turn them back in. These are not good machines, guys. And so anyway, then, huh, we shouldn't expect all generations to learn all this stuff. We can't do that and I'm from the baby boomers. Now that was the most, if you guys don't know it, that was the most, that was after the war. We're still here. There's a lot of us and we're still learning, but we're not going to learn that stuff. So anyway, but yeah, I wanted you to know the Benton Harbor story and, and how you don't want to have it on your conscience that you caused St. Joe to go down. I know you don't want to. So use this compliance thing to your advantage. Get rid of it.
Thank you.
Hi, Pete Plakitis, 3050 South Lake Shore Drive, St. Joe Township. I would agree with everyone, it needs to be canceled permanently, not put on hold. I'll give you one anecdote. I was in a big box store in South Bend checking out. They had to see my driver's license. They said, oh, you're from St. Joe. I hear you have a parking issue there. I'll never go back there. That was the checkout clerk in a big box store in South Bend. It's spreading. People have heard they don't want to come back. And I understand you need more revenue. That means you have a spending problem. There's places in your budget that you can cut. There are, you spent $150,000 on the ice rink. I love an ice rink, but that's a lot of money. He's got $150,000 boiler upgrade for the ice rink. That's a lot of money. There's places where you can cut money if it needs to be done. And I'll just say from people that, and I live in the township, I don't live in the city, nobody's coming back. They're afraid of it. They don't want to deal with it. So make it permanent. Don't make it a pause, make it permanent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Nancy from Revive Spa 313 Main Street here and I was going to come up here and read all these wonderful comments that were on Facebook regarding this, but I'm going to, I'm going to not do that because there, there's a lot of negative stuff out there. And my point for wanting to read all of this is that there's been a lot of damage done. There's a lot of damage to the reputation of this town, a lot. And I want to know what you're going to do to stop this. What kind of damage control do you guys have in place? There's going to have to be a hell of an advertising campaign. There's going to have to be something to get our people to come back. Okay, they're finding other places to go have what, do whatever it is they're doing. It's a hell of a lot easier for my tanners to go over to Tiki Tan where there's a big ass parking lot rather than come over here and circle around for a 15 minute service. Okay, and I do a lot of things at my spa. There's a lot of things happening there, but I had a woman come in Friday. She was handicapped with a, with a tag on her, on her car. She had to park in this parking lot here that is worse than the Appalachian Trail and come into my spa and then she had to, then she had a lovely massage and then she had to take the Appalachian Trail back to her car, negating her entire lovely spa day. I mean, we need to focus on making this town safe for us to walk. I've rolled my ankles a couple of times. I'm worried about the axle in my car. I need, you know, I can't afford to get my car fixed, okay? And this last weekend was 58% less than the same weekend last year. We got to do some damage control and we got to do it quick. Thank you.
Other public comment? Okay. Well, that moves us along then on our agenda. We are on the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda include regular meeting minutes of Wednesday, May 28, 2025, special meeting minutes of Thursday, June 5, 2025, invoicing tax dispersments, resolution authorizing administration fee, property taxes, resolution authorizing bank, bank depositories and signatories, new board appointment, addendum to license agreement, special event application, St. Joe River Yacht Club tri-state regatta and the St. Joseph Housing Commission monthly update. What's the pleasure of the commission?
I move to present, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I support.
All right, Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
All right, item number 15, an old business zoning ordinance amendment, sections 18.2.6, 1627C, table 181, parking standards, City of St. Joseph's second and final reading.
Right on cue. Thanks, Kristen. During the May 28th meeting, the city commission heard the, approved the first reading of an ordinance to amend sections 18.2.6 or, yeah, six and then 18.2.7C, table 181, parking standards, which created a uniform parking requirement. Parking regulations created definitions, so it's more uniform for, and more easier for people to calculate their required parking. We're requesting approval of the second reading tonight, which will become effective in 10 days.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions from the commission? This is second reading, so. Okay. What's the pleasure?
Just on the motion, it would be for a second reading.
Sorry, I'm just going down to it.
I move to approve a second reading of an ordinance to amend Article 13 Off-Street Parking and Loading, Section 18.2.6, measurement and calculations to define square feet, non-durable goods and durable goods, and to modify the definition of seating capacity. And Section 18.2.7.C, Table 18-1, parking standards, to modify use categories to correspond with the uses classes in Table 4-1, standardized parking formulas and reduce some parking requirements in the zoning ordinance of the City of St. Joseph, Michigan, based on the factors set forth under Section 22.3 of the zoning, zoning ordinance.
Support.
All right, any public comment on this matter? Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, item number 16, under new business, we are on special event application, Berry County Sheriff's Office, peer support 5K.
Cameron, I think. Great.
Got a new special event application for you. It's a new 5K. This one is, the organization is the Berry County Sheriff's Office for the peer support 5K. Scheduled date is Saturday, September 20th, or I'm sorry, September 13th with a alternate date of September 20th. This 5K is going to follow the same route that was previously approved by the YMCA. The race for the YMCA 5K, 10K, so it's going to start at the Arboretum, go down to Lake Street, go through Lion's Bark Drive, back to Howard Trail and then back through Lake Street and then back to the finish line there. So just asking for your approval on that.
All right. Any questions?
No.
No question. All right, what is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the Berry County Sheriff's Office peer support 5K special event application as presented and direct staff to issue a special event permit.
Support.
Any public comment on this matter? All right, Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number 17, BSNA cloud upgrade agreement.
Hey, so we're asking to approve the agreement for the upgrade to our accounting system. The vendor is BSNA LLC. They specialize in governmental accounting. They're very big in Michigan. Most of the customers in the county use BSNA. We are a big user of them. We use the general ledger, accounts payable, cash receiving, accounts receiving, fixed assets, apparel, human resources, timesheets, building department and assessing. We also use the tax module. Tax module is paid by the county and we also use the BSNA payments, which will launch this spring. The current version came out in 2008, so it's old and it's going away. They're going to end of life the system itself and will be forced upgrade. So we're seeking the agreement now so we control the cost and the timing. Some of the benefits will be, processes will be improved. They were currently doing, done by hand. We won't need dedicated server hardware or the IT to support that. So it's a bit of a change that way. Each module is going to be combined to a unified database, which is much different than it is now. Better access to the data tables from Excel, which I'm very excited for. More capabilities improvements because it's a better product, it's improved and evolved. They are not evolving the current version, only the new cloud versions being updated. The updates will be automatic and there's some better workflow. There's two components, fixed cost for this. There is the implementation cost was $28,200. That's going to involve the project manager to help us with the upgrade. And then there's training at $55,200 and we won't necessarily use all that training if we don't need it. That's an up to value depending on how staff takes to the new system. The annual maintenance cost is going to increase. I already had, we have that built in the budget. We also have this project as a whole, if you remember, we talked about it way back, the budget process, that's also built in, but the annual expense is built in and that's on the, in the pack, there's a chart where I attempted to project the expected cost of our current version versus the new cloud version from the contract. And the increase there is due because it's a different product, it's more advanced and featureful. Also, it's cloud and naturally I'm using the hardware here in the system or the city. So we're looking forward to the approval of the agreement.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission?
No.
What's the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the BSNA cloud upgrade agreement, including $83,400 for project implementation and training costs, as well as $53,460 for software annual fees and to direct the city manager to execute an agreement with BSNA pending city attorney contract approval.
I support.
All right, any public comment on the matter? All right, Abby, call the roll. Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Thanks, Ben. All right, item number 18, under Reports, FEMA, Berry County, August 30, 2024, flood insurance rate maps and flood insurance study, 90-day appeal process starting June 6, 2025.
This is more of an informational thing, so FEMA has been working on updating the FEMA floodplain maps along the river, um, St. Joseph River, and they came out back in, um, August 30th. There was a public meeting on November 14th at the, um, Benton Harbor Public Library. Myself, along with other staff members, were, attended that meeting and we did run into some local residents. So as part of the process to amend the maps, FEMA has a 90-day appeal process, which starts, probably started Friday or today. So anyone who believes the maps, the revised maps are inaccurate, have 90 days to submit a written appeal, scientific appeal to the city, and then the city makes that paperwork to the FEMA representative. So we're asking if anyone does not believe the FEMA map is correct for their piece of property, they get all the required information to the city by Monday, August 25th, so we can submit it in accordance with the 90-day review process. And then once the 90-day review process, if no one comes in and appeals, then FEMA has a couple more steps and then eventually the city will need to adopt the new maps. But until then, the current maps from April 25th, 2024 are an effect.
Thank you. Yeah, any questions?
So it does affect some of our property owners. Yeah, if you're on the river, um, we looked at it a little when they first came out. We didn't see a lot of big changes compared to the current maps we're using. There were some changes and we did have some residents that did appeal though, that map and were successful in their appeal after some time. Um, so it's just letting everyone know the information is also available on the city's website, um, because it is on the owners of the property owner to do the appeal and it's not anecdotal information. It is scientific data that they would need to hire a engineering firm familiar with it to prepare the necessary documents.
Are affected property owners notified about this or is this serving as the announcement?
This is part of it. I don't know exactly how they all find out. I think a lot of them who have flood insurance through their, because they are in the, have flood on their property, um, are notified through their insurance companies or mortgage companies. The lady, the one lady I remember distinctly at the meeting back in November at, in Benton Harbor, she received notice through her insurance company.
Thank you. All right, what's the pleasure of the commission?
It's just a reading.
Thank you for the information.
All right, that moves us along to city comments, city manager comments. Take it away.
Thank you. Um, we just passed the revisions to the parking, um, ordinance and I just wanted to celebrate that. Congratulations to Kristen and the Planning Commission, who I know have worked really hard on that. When I started with the City of St. Joseph, I heard a lot about this property, on the YWCA property and how there was a planned project many years ago that didn't happen because of our parking ordinance. Um, and tonight we officially changed it. And, um, many years in the making, but an overdue change and a change that I know Kristen and the Planning Commission worked really hard on. So I think it is really great to celebrate it. Um, and, um, I just wanted to take a minute, since it is Dad Week officially, um, to say that my kids have the best dad, who I really appreciate. I have spent an inordinate amount of time uh, thinking about parking recently and I am very appreciative.
Thank you. How about city commission comments?
Uh, if anybody heard a bunch of sirens last night roughly around this time, uh, I really hope you did because there was a parade in town to honor the, uh, first ever Michigan State Flag Football Girls High School Championship Team from right here in St. Joe. So big congratulations to our St. Joe High School girls.
Yay.
As the father of a nine-year-old girl, I am uh, and giving more opportunities to our daughters, so.
We had 314 people in the lighthouse on Saturday, including Commissioner Binkley. Um, so just another celebration of those volunteers, hard work to keep that open. It will be open, weather, weather pending, of course, every Saturday here in the summer.
I feel like I just want to speak to address some of the things that were said. There were some inaccuracies and I also think that people think that they were the enemy. We researched this for two years. We wanted to address needs that have been requested to be addressed. There was always a parking issue. Our first priority was to try and solve the parking issue. We have moved a lot of the parking that was blocking the businesses over to the side of the street. And I will say a lot of those were employees that wanted to park near the business and it's freed up some parking. That was our number one goal. Our second goal was if we have some income that comes from paid parking, that would go all back into the businesses and improve the downtown business area. Now, I recognize that there is an economic downturn everywhere. I called a number of stores up and down the state today to find out how they compared from last year. And I will tell you, if you could let me talk, I talked to store owners. Okay, well, I will tell you, I talked to some store owners that own stores here and in Grand Rapids and Kalamazoo. We were second. I'm not saying that's true for everyone. I'm just wanting to say some other facts. You guys have told us a lot of facts. I want to get a few more facts out. I also want to say, yes, there are a lot of negative comments out there, but I don't think you know all the positive emails that we get from people too. And many people that have told me, I'm too afraid to come in and talk in front of people and say, I think it's not a bad plan to invest money back into the bus, into the business area. And I'm just saying that's the truth. So I just wanted to set some of the records straight. And I also want to say, of course, we're in agreement. We said we're gonna pause and we're gonna meet with business owners and I think it's
You should be with residents too.
This is commissioner comment. Thank you.
And residents. I think it's incumbent on all of us to figure out how we get customers back. Because yes, they've seen things on TV and they say, ooh, all those people are complaining about the parking. I don't want to go there. So it's on all of us to improve the goodwill. Oh, you don't think it's on the whole? Wait, I'm just saying it's on the whole city. We want our, you think that we haven't put time and effort and energy and that we don't love our city? We love our city. I've spent so many hours. I just, let me finish my comment. I just, yes, we did a study. There are so many facts that I would love to tell people if we could meet with you individual, but there's so many things that we would have to go over right now that I don't know that everybody wants to hear, but but you could
That's enough. Please be patient.
You could come in and individually, we'll show you the study that we have. I just want to say there's two sides to every story and we want to work with you. We
Please allow for her to make her commission comments. Thank you.
I just want to say, we want the businesses to succeed and that's why we want to work with you. Do you think we want businesses to fail? We do not want businesses to fail. We want to work with you. We want to make sure our downtown thrives and that should be the goal of all of us and that is definitely our goal.
Thanks, Michelle. Thank you, Michelle. Um, hearing no other commission comments, I do want to go out on a happy note. You do have a grand opening for the Kaleidoscope Park at the end of the month.
Yes, we do.
That's a very exciting thing. Speaking of inclusivity, like I said earlier, the, um, Kiwanis Park will be opening a grand opening on the 30th at
June 30th from 4 to 6.
4 to 6. It's a great way to celebrate our city. We do have a lot of amazing things and I always say the problem that we, we have here is a sign of a healthy city. We have really great things going on here. We, I work with every county through my professional job. I have a full-time job outside of this and I work 40 hours a week as a social worker and I work with every community law enforcement and there are lots of really big issues in this county and I am so thankful and grateful that I live here and I'm serving this community because the problems we have are, are things that we can solve. They are not as violent as the things that I deal with in my full-time job, unfortunately. And I think that being here, being a part of this problem and a part of the solution is a really fortunate thing that we all want to help out with. So we're glad you're all here. Thank you so much. We are gonna wrap this up and we're gonna go into closed session. When, can we get a motion?
I move to, can I just say, I move to go into a closed session. Do I have to say this?
There is a proposed motion. I'm requesting a closed session so that you can go into, uh, discuss a confidential legal opinion that I wrote.
Yep.
Uh, and authored containing advice and opinions.
I've got it. I move that the St. Joseph City Commission go into closed session with Attorney Lori Schmidt.
Still in session. Keep going, just keep going.
And discussion of a confidential legal opinion. She authored containing legal advice and opinions subject to attorney-client privilege pursuant to MCL 15.268H and MCL 15.2431G.
If you could please, we have a couple more items.
I support.
All right, Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Sorolla?
We're still in session.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
All right, close. All right, close session.